Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of January the 24th, 2023. Calling the meeting to order, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Thank you very much. Now, if we all could rise, the Pledge of Legions. And I've asked if our Police Chief Ryan Johansson could please lead us. Thank you, Chief. Item number four, public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public can have up to three minutes to discuss items that are not on the agenda. Are there any speaker cards from anyone here? How about on Zoom, please?
I have no speaker cards or virtual, went to virtual hands raised. They just came up. The first one is Paul Wapinski.
Thank you.
I will bring you in the room now if you would like to go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. There was little to no press regarding this, but I'd like to bring to the attention of our residents in the city council, if they're not already aware, of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's plan to charge drivers to pay per mile fees on our highways in the Bay Area. They won't reduce your gas tax, smog fees, or bridge tolls, just make you pay more in the guise of reducing congestion. But in their brief that I watched, and you can view on their website, they even admit that they still won't reduce congestion, but it's just so that they can get more money for public transportation projects. El Camino Real will be a park for everyone not wanting to be charged driving on 101 or 280. Whatever people want to think about how good public transportation is as a savior for congestion, it's not. Nobody's using it. Barts at 30% of pre-COVID levels and not increasing, and I never see a full bus in El Camino. So why spend more money on transportation systems that people don't want to or are not going to use? Residents need to familiarize themselves with Bay Area Plan 2050 and stop it now before we go down a bad path. Don't let them go forward this money grab and take more money out of your pocket that you don't have to spare. And I'd also like to bring up that the city council will make a New Year's resolution for the, to get the Public Works Department to fix the asphalt on Sneeath Lane, El Camino, to the post office, and San Bruno Avenue from El Camino to the airport. It's almost undrivable. I don't even want to ride my mountain bike on it. The recent rains have even done more damage, and there's lots of other areas that need attention, but these are really bad. And are we even using our Measure G funds? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Nina Phillips. Nina, we've brought you in if you're ready to speak.
Thank you so much. Hi there. My name's Nina. I'm joining you today as a representative of Hip Housing. We are a local affordable housing nonprofit that has been operating throughout San Mateo County for 50 years now. We invest in human potential by improving the housing and lives of people in our community. On behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the City of San Bruno for your enduring support of our organization and affordable housing solutions. With that, I'd like to today present you a symbol of our appreciation for our ongoing partnership with our 2023 Hip Housing calendar. So I believe you've all received them late last week. Hopefully, I can't see you over Zoom, but hopefully we've got, they've got the calendars up there on the dais with you. Otherwise, I'm sure they're in the offices somewhere. These calendars feature art from 12 young artists living in San Mateo County, selected from a pool of 250 entrants last year. Every month corresponds with a drawing of home and a beautiful quote about what home means to you. We are so proud to work throughout San Mateo County and in the City of San Bruno to create affordable housing solutions for low-income individuals and families. Each year, we house over 1,200 people, thanks to our strong partnerships with local governments. This includes the 24 people who are currently living in San Bruno through our home-sharing matches. That's really exciting. As you also know, our cities are very interconnected in San Mateo County. Clients of ours may live in one city and work in San Bruno, commuting throughout. They, we also support families through our self-sufficiency programs, including 60 adults and 77 children. I just finally, I'd like to close out with one of my favorite quotes in this year's calendar. The month of June is occupied by Taran L., a kindergartner from, quite close to here, she's from South San Francisco. She's created such a beautiful, colorful drawing, and she says that "My home is special to me because my family is there. It is where I feel comfortable and safe." We hope that our calendar resonates with you and spurs you to consider the importance of a safe and stable home, especially in a region that is so defined by housing challenges. I ask that you help to spread the word about our programs and that we can continue to support individuals and families within our community. Please feel free to reach out to me with any questions or additional information about Hip Housing's innovative programs. With that, I'd like to turn it back to the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
We have no more virtual hands raised, but we do have one speaker card from Mike Ging.
Mr. Groganis.
Gingoa.
Yes.
Gingoa.
For not the item on, and not for any items on the agenda.
No items on the agenda. In fact, I'm here on another item that I'm going to speak on.
Please, welcome.
First of all, good evening. It's great to see you all here today. I haven't spoken in front of a council in many years, so please excuse me if I'm a little nervous. I'm here on my capacity as an elected official for the San Mateo County Community College District. As you all know, we have a vacancy, and that vacancy would be covering trustee Area 3. I have a prepared statement that the board has given me to give to you, and I'd like to deliver it at this time. On December 13th, 2022, governing board member Goodman vacated a seat on San Mateo County Community College District Board of Trustees, creating a board vacancy for trustee Area 3. At a special board meeting on December 20th, 2022, the San Mateo County Community College District Board took action to fill the vacancy by making a provisional appointment. The appointee will hold the office until the next governing board member election, which occurs at the statewide general election in November 2024. To make a long story short, I'm recruiting people. I'm looking for someone that has some sort of a connection to education, person that understands working with the group is important, person that has a regional view, but a person that also has a local view to be able to represent Area 3, the district that covers your area, which is San Bruno, Milbrae, Hillsborough, all the way down. I cover District 2, which is Daly City, Colma, Brisbane, parts of South San Francisco, and Colma. Oh, I think I already said that. Anyway, the point, to wrap up, most of you know how to get ahold of me? I'm looking, I'm really looking for someone, and we made the appointment process very easy. It's a 500-word essay, and the question is why I want to be a San Mateo County Community College trustee. So, with your CV. So please, I know you know people, and that's why I'm here. So thank you very much for your time, and the applications are available online. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming and tell the board thank you, and you did well. You haven't missed a step or a beat. So, and congratulations, Mr. Trustee. Any other speakers?
No, I have no other hands raised or speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you again. We will move on to item five, announcements and presentations. First item is item A, proclamation of February as Black History Month, and I will read portions of it. This year's theme of Black History is, of the Black History Resistance Representation Identified and the Diversity is set every year by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, an organization founded in 1915 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the famed African-American historian known as, quote, "Father of Black History," end quote. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls for our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its demographic ideals. And whereas, in 2020, the City of San Bruno had formed the Heart Committee to build trust and strength and partnership amongst local community-based organizations, public agencies, neighborhood groups, and religious organizations to explore and evaluate successful models and best practices for racial and social equality. And whereas, in 2019, the City of San Bruno brought forward, to the cities in the San Mateo County and the Board of Supervisors, the United Against Hate Campaign, which encourages cities and residents to work together against hate, thereby restoring respect and civil discourse, embracing the strength of diversity, and building inclusive and equitable communities for all. Whereas, the City of San Bruno continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Rico Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month and encourage all residents and visitors alike to join us in celebrating this special month. With that, is there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
I have no one that wishes to speak.
Thank you. Let us move on to item B under announcements, which is the staff will give us an update on the city responses to the late 2022, early 2023 winter storms, and I will turn it over to Director Lee, please.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of council. My name is Matt Lee. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of San Bruno. I'm here for you tonight to provide you a brief update on the most recent storms. While we wait for the PowerPoint presentation to load, just a little history to recap where we were. Severe winter storm started on October 31st, right before the new year. On January 3rd, there was a proclamation by our city manager to scare, to declare a state of emergency for the city, which was ratified on January 10th. And so for tonight's agenda, we're not going to kind of rehash all that has happened since January 10th. The updates will be for, from since then. After January 10th, we'll then talk about the progress updates on the areas of damage throughout our city, and we'll go into a little detail about the damage of areas or the damage statuses by type. And then we'll talk about our ongoing processes and next steps, and then we'll open up to any questions that you may have. So, since our last report, the Emergency Operations Center has been deactivated at 5:00 PM on Thursday, January 12th, and that was just due to the fact that the rains kind of slowed down a little bit. The EOC is ready to be reactivated anytime as needed. However, the city still remains under a local state of emergency, and that is to allow us to continually make repairs to areas of damage. We're also currently assessing areas of damage and other repairs when necessary. Next, this map is, it's a little hard to read, but it kind of highlights the areas of damage throughout our city. As you can see, for areas highlighted in green mudhill slides, they're kind of on the west side of town, namely west of 280. There are areas of infrastructure damage sprinkled throughout town, and about three sinkholes all around town as well. Prior to going on to the next slide, the Public Works Department has spent approximately $130,000 on the storm thus far, approximately $60,000 in contractor support, and $70,000 in supplies and materials. As we move to damage status by types, this was discussed previously by our city manager, Javon Grogan, at the last council meeting. We have approximately eight mudhill slide areas throughout the city on the west side of town, and what staff has done was to lay visqueen on the areas to protect the slide, and we currently are under a geotechnical review on all those locations. They mainly are superficial slides based on the preliminary investigations. The next damage are particularly the sinkholes. We have about four sinkhole locations, two of which have since been repaired. One near, one of our water tanks, one on Crystal Springs Road at Cypress, which is the photo on the left, and we just recently discovered a recessed manhole over in Oakmont Drive, which is the photo in the middle. The biggest sinkhole depression is up near Skyline Boulevard, just north of Sneeath, in a parking lot. The photo on the right is the temporary Band-Aid measure that we've implemented immediately after the storm. This is where a 54-inch storm drainpipe disconnected and kind of caused the sinkhole in the area. As you can see with the repair itself, we were hoping that the Band-Aid measure would hold. However, this video that I'm going to show is from last Monday, when the weather was dry, of the flow of the storm order. As you can see, even without any rain and sunny weather, it's still pretty full and flow. If you look at the video, the green sandbags on the upper, on the top of that video have kind of sunk in a little, so the Band-Aid measure is starting to fail, and we're looking at implementing a larger temporary repair. After videoing the cameras, after videoing the storm drainpipe, we noticed deterioration in the storm drainpipe at multiple locations. The engineering team is looking at the type of repair that will be done, and we will implement that shortly once we determine what is the most cost-effective solution. In terms of other types of damages that's street-related, as you can see in the photo on the left, there's a bent guardrail over by San Bruno Avenue, just west of Princeton, due to a fallen tree. We have a downed streetlight arm pole near Trager and San Bruno Avenue from a fallen tree in the photo on the right, and we have streetlights that were out on Whitman Way between Princeton Drive and Madison Avenue, and on Madison Avenue between Whitman Way and Rosewood, but that has since been re-energized and repaired on January 11th. The photo in the middle is, is a down radar sign pole. We're currently working with the contractor to determine the, an effective repair. One of the challenges with these radar signs is, due to supply chain issues, it's taken time to kind of place order for these slightly special equipment. So, in terms of other damage, there was a sump pump failure near Lyons Field. As you can see in the photo there, the sump pump failed during the storm. As you can see, it's, that area is actually within the flood zone, and that sump pump is really important. It failed due to just being overworked during the rain. Staff has reached out to manufacturers, and the exact specific sump pump is unavailable for at least six months, so they made the decision to go with a different sump pump, just so we can get the field ready in time for Little League. One area of damage that has not yet been classified, but we discovered today, is near Ingval Canyon. Typically, in large storms, you may get settlement of silt of about one to six inches in the area. We discovered today, actually, as the water level's gotten low, there's approximately six to eight feet of silt in the area of Ingval Canyon. Staff has cleared the drainage and the trash capture device to allow for flow in that area. In terms of the location, as you can see here, it is just, Ingval Canyon is kind of behind Crestmore and Concord Drive, at the end of Concord Drive. In terms of the ongoing processes and next steps, we're currently responding and assessing to all damages of infrastructure between, in between storms. Luckily, we've had a break over the past week and a half, and that's allowed us to kind of make some assessment and determine repairs. We're responding to new storm damages when they do come. We're doing continual monitoring of weather patterns, and we're also continuing to monitor known areas of interest, and we implement repairs as quickly as possible and when feasible. And lastly, with that, I would just like to thank the Parks Division and Public Works Department and all the work that they've done during the storm. I know that the rain has stopped, but the team has been continually trying to make infrastructure repairs. And with the last slide that I have up there, it's just information for, for the public, for you to stay up to date. I would highly encourage that you register at SMC Alert, which is www.smcalert.info. That's where you can be notified with emergency notification whenever anything happens. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the updating the report, and once again, as I stated last time, thank you to staff because the rain may not be following, but there is still a lot of work and assessments that have to be done on a day-to-day basis and standby, et cetera. So thank you to that. Any questions or comments from council? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
I do have a hand up, a virtual hand, and it is Paul Wapinski. Mr. Wapinski, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. When the president came out to review the storm damage, San Mateo County was not on the list for federal funds. And I know that Anna Schu, who's not our Congresswoman, but she asked him that includes San Mateo County, and I wonder if that was included, and if it was, do we have a prioritized list for the federal funding that we might get for the city? And the second thing I have was, the trees that fell over on San Bruno Avenue were pretty big. They crossed all four lanes. Did anybody do an assessment of the rest of the trees that are there to make sure that they're okay and they won't fall over? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
I have no other virtual hands raised and no speaker cards.
Okay. Well, again, Mr. Lee, anything else? Mr. Lee?
Yeah? Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. You're welcome to, or not, I'll...
Mr. Mayor, I take your looking at me as...
You're kind of right.
If there's any clarifications, we can provide.
Yes, sir.
Know that staff is continuing to track all possible reimbursements. It is not certain yet that we will be reimbursed. There are, certainly our elected officials at both the federal and state level and local and regional level are articulating on behalf of San Mateo County, but we are certainly continuing to track all of our costs and fill out the required forms should there be reimbursement for our storm impacts.
I very much appreciate it. Thank you kindly. With that, before we move on to consent, I just wanted to take a pause. It's not on the agenda, but obviously, in the last few days, last, very few days, we've had from Monterey Park and obviously Half Moon Bay and Oakland, and obviously eschewed to Supervisor Pine, Supervisor Mueller, Mayor Penrose of Half Moon Bay to just express our condolences that we stand with them and that we are here for them. But with that, I just wanted to pause for that because we always do need to worry. We need to be thankful for our first responders and realize that when everybody thinks, and we've suffered it ourselves, that it can't happen in your backyard, it does. And it's happening far too often within our state. So with that, let's move on to consent. Item six, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and are may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be a single public comment, period, for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. We have items A through G. Before I open it up to council, I just want to make a comment on item G to clarify that that is a 5% to 6% tax that council has staff... Are there any items that council would like to see pulled for a separate vote? Any items that council would like to have for further questions, clarifications, or comments?
To the chair, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Alvarez.
I have a question on line items E, line item E. Did staff consider...
Let me see if there, if it hasn't, I'll come right back to that. Is there anything other than item E for consent for further clarification or comment? Okay. Okay. So let's go to item E, as was just asked. Adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement with West Coast Arborist, Inc., in the amount not to exceed 201,600, for the removal of eucalyptus on Crystal Springs Road from Donner Avenue, westbound to the west end of the Recreation and Aquatic Center construction site. Councilmember Alvarez.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Did staff consider putting this work, to a bid, bid to different contractors?
Sure. We'll have our Community Services Director, Anne Matola, address that.
Good evening, council. Due to the nature of the work being a emergency removal, we met with finance to examine the best course of action. This is within the scope of the work under a current contractor, and so really it was more prudent to expand the work through that removals. We'll take a look at that, we'll take a look at an open RFP at that time.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from colleagues on that item? Hearing is seen none. Then we'll bring them back to council for action on consent items A through G.
Look to prove.
A second.
Okay. Councilmember Salazar, motion, and Councilmember Alvarez as a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes.
Five oh, passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item seven, public hearings, please.
Item seven, public hearing, conduct a public hearing, deliberate, and, one, adopt an initial study slash mitigated negative declaration, two, adopt a resolution making findings and overriding the Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with respect to noise policies for San Bruno's draft 2023 to 2031 housing element update, and, three, adopt a general plan text amendment to policy HS-40 to acknowledge the local airport land use commission's ALUC override process and adopt the 2023 to 2031 housing element update, replacing the 2015 to 2023 housing element with findings that the housing element sustainability complies with housing element law, and authorize staff to submit the housing element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for certification.
Thank you for reading that. And, Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Peter Gilliam, the Director of Community and Economic Development. Be introducing this item and then handing it off to Michael Smith, our senior planner, who has been the lead on the housing element throughout the process. So, if we could have the slideshow, please? So, this is, as mentioned, this is an item where there are two major parts, and one is the public hearing to consider override, overriding the airport land use commission's inconsistency determination, and the other major part is the adoption of the housing element. Trying to get the slide to go. Now the slide's gone all the way. Okay. So here's the, kind of the agenda of what we're going to go through. There's a lot of pieces, and most of this is normal. There's an objective. We'll go through background. We'll go through information about parts of it, but the background is going to have a lot of discussion about the housing element and then the airport land use commission override process. And due to a conflict, there will be a part in the agenda item when we get to the override process where we're going to change how the procedures are going to work, where we're going to separate the discussion, the recommendation, the questions, the public comment, and the final action for the override part to allow that council member who has the conflict to recuse themselves. Then, when that is done, the full council will come back together, will continue the rest of the items, and then you will have a recommended action, questions, public comment, and action on the housing element as a whole. So as we get to that point, we have more slides to help with the protocol. So the objective for tonight's item is for council to have the public hearing, deliberate and adopt resolutions related to the initial study mitigated negative declaration, that's the environmental document associated with all of these actions. The airport land use commission override, which I mentioned, will be doing separately, and then a general plan amendment as well as adoption of the housing element itself. I'm going to be going a little through the background, mostly talking about the timelines and deadlines, again, before handing it off to Michael Smith. So this is the timeline in general for the housing element. The housing element is a state mandated document, and it's been a long process, and the process is very much defined by the law, state law. We started off in 2021 with significant public engagement. We had numerous public workshops and webinar series. Then, as we got into the first part of 2022, a website was launched for the housing element. There was an online survey in which we did a utility insert to let basically as many people in town know about this online survey to get the maximum amount of response. Held board workshops. Council held two study sessions. We had meetings also with the planning commission. And what basically happened was council reviewed the content, the policies, gave direction to staff and the consultant team that worked on this. In May through June, there was a public draft of the housing element that was published. The planning commission held a meeting and reviewed it, and then the planning, and then the housing element draft was submitted to HCD. That's the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Housing elements are somewhat unique in that they're one of the few planning documents that the state actually has the authority to review and make comments on. So the first round of review happened in June. We got our comments back in October. And the revisions made to the document to respond to HCD, they were numerous and time-consuming, but they were not really changing any of the policies that council had directed staff to do in May. So it was a lot of work, a lot of, and very, very time-consuming, but the fundamentals of what council saw in May is, are still in the revised draft. So when those amendments were made, the revised draft was published for public review end of December on the 30th itself. And then, by state law, before coming to council for adoption, this item has to go to the planning commission, and so that went to the planning commission on the 12th of January. And then here we are at this meeting intended for the adoption, and then the intent is to have the document, the adopted housing element, submitted to HCD by January 31st, which is a key deadline. It's important to note that basically almost every Bay Area city and county are going through this at the same time. When we checked a month ago, two of the 101 cities in the Bay Area had a certified housing element. That's two out of 101. So while it may seem that, you know, the deadline is close, we are pretty much in the same spot as all the other cities, arguably compared to the timelines of many in our county. We're arguably ahead. So based on state law, the requirements of what this document needs to have, it's very time-consuming, and your colleagues in the neighboring cities are kind of going through the same challenges as well. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the deadline. This is a deadline for the city to submit an adopted housing element to the state. There are, this is important because there are consequences of late adoption. One is that you lose access to certain grant funds for housing, not necessarily funds that the city always applies for, but nonprofits in the city may apply for, so we want to be able to get the document in for that. There's also requirements to expedite certain steps that are needed in the housing element, like the rezoning of any sites that we have to do for the housing element. And then a lot of potential for lawsuits, fines, and even the loss of land use authority at the worst. So it's been an emphasis of staff to try to get this document to you in time for us to meet this deadline. There's also this topic called the builder's remedy that's been in the news in recent months, at least, news that local cities pay attention to, maybe not the mainstream news. For background, the Housing Accountability Act, which is a state law, it already limits local abilities to turn down certain type of housing projects. If we do not submit the housing element by this deadline, the builder's remedy is basically the result of our ability to possibly turn down a housing project that does not comply with our general plan or zoning would be lost. So again, it's very important to have the document adopted and submitted to HCD. So at this point, I will hand it off to Michael Smith, who will continue with the presentation of the actual housing element itself. I will return when we get to the part of the agenda where we'll be talking about the shift to the airport override discussion.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of council, Michael Smith, senior planner. I'm going to be going over, and start my presentation with an overview of the components of a housing element. So it's a lot of technical information I'll be going over here, but housing elements are required by law to include the following components. The first is a housing needs assessment, and this examines the demographic, employment, and housing trends and conditions, and identifies existing and protecting housing needs for the community. The next section of the housing element that's required is the evaluation of past performance, and this is where we look at our previous housing element and see how we did in implementing those programs. The next one is the housing sites inventory. This is an identification of locations available for sites for housing development or redevelopment to ensure there is enough land zone for housing to meet the future needs at all income levels. New state requirements for cities to identify a housing sites are now more stringent, requiring more justification to explain why a site in the inventory is likely to develop, especially if it's non-vacant. The next section that's required is the community engagement piece. This is, each city is required to implement a robust community engagement program which reaches all economic segments of the community, including traditionally underrepresented groups. The next piece is the constraints analysis, and this is where we analyze our own government policies and procedures and non-governmental barriers that are present for housing development. The next is the policies and programs section of the housing element, and this is where we establish policies and programs that will be carried out over the, during the planning cycle to fulfill our identified housing needs. And a significant new requirement for this particular period for the housing element was the requirement to evaluate, excuse me, for affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is something that's kind of woven throughout the document, and it's, the purpose is to be more intentional about correcting housing issues that disproportionately impact underrepresented racial groups. So I'm going to go over a little bit of the needs assessment from our housing element. So a needs assessment was prepared for the housing element based upon using data from HCD and ABAG, and the analysis shows that new households buying single-family housing in San Bruno tend to have above moderate incomes, and they're replacing households with moderate and below moderate incomes. Those who rent tend to live in multifamily buildings and experience higher rates of rent burden in the city, meaning that they pay a larger portion of their income towards rent. Compared to households on the west side, households in neighborhoods east of El Camino are more rent burdened. Again, that's paying more than 30% of their income towards rent. They experience higher rates of overcrowding in their housing, and there's more instances of substandard housing, and the environmental conditions in those neighborhoods is a little worse on the west side as well. The city's higher-resourced neighborhoods are located west of Highway 280 in the hills and experience lower social vulnerability scores, lower concentrations of cost-burdened households, less overcrowding, and less vulnerability of displacement. So this is like really just a very high-level overview of some of the needs assessment in the document. Additional details can be found in the document itself. So next area of the housing element that I want to cover is the statewide housing mandate, which we know as RENA. So our RENA for this cycle is 3,165 units, and we have gone over this several times at several meetings in the past. The overall Bay Area was assigned 441,000 units, and of that, 40, over 47,000 was assigned to San Mateo County. This is a big increase over previous RENA cycles. And then on the table right there, you can see that we've applied a 15% buffer to this that is recommended by HCD to make sure that you maintain a certain amount of housing sites throughout the entire planning cycle, which is eight years. And so we've added that, and that adds 475 units to our total, and that brings our total up to 3,640. And this is also consistent with feedback we got from council at a previous study session So how are we going to meet that RENA? This slide shows how we can do that. So although the higher RENA seems daunting, the good news is the city has the capacity to meet its RENA through a variety of methods. This table lists the city's strategy for accommodating its RENA. So the first line is we have the pipeline projects. These are the projects that have already been approved in the city, and we have 670 units in this bucket that we can credit towards our RENA. We have the future development of ADUs, where we are projecting 240 ADUs, and for that, we did an estimate, and per HCD, you can use the average ADU production over the last three years, and so that's how we arrived at that number of the 240 to credit towards our RENA. The sites inventory itself has identified 2,709 units on vacant and non-vacant sites in the city. And then the housing units constructed since July 1st in that bucket, we are allowed to credit any housing units that have been constructed in the city since that time, and we have 43 units in that bucket, and that includes a number of ADUs and the project at Skyline College. So with that, and then also, in addition to this, if you look at what is currently under review in the city by the department, there are over 1,600 units currently under review. So, and this includes Tanfran, which is obviously 1,000 units, and so we can credit all this towards this goal. And so the city is actually well on its way towards meeting its RENA right now when you add all those numbers up. So this is a map of our site inventory for the 2,700, over 2,700 units. And this is the overall city map view of the site inventory. You can see that we focused on neighborhoods close to transit and existing plant, specific plan areas. Ingval is the largest site west in the city. Not many sites on the west side, mostly school and religious sites are located on that side of the city. Some have asked why the town center, why we didn't include the town center in this, and that is because it appears to be doing well economically, and so we're looking more for sites that are more likely to develop, and so right now, Town Center didn't fit that mold. It also has a very complicated ownership structure, but that does not preclude the owners of Town Center from approaching the city in the future to do housing, and we would definitely be receptive to that. So under the land uses designated in the city's general plan and zoning code, many acres of commercial land in San Bruno's transit corridors have eligible capacity for redevelopment with mixed uses, including housing. The city has identified a specific set of housing opportunity sites within the transit corridors, as well as the potential reuse of some former school sites. Most of these sites have the TOD designation, and all of which are especially appropriate and likely for redevelopment over the period of this housing element cycle. The methodology we use to find these sites, we, so first off, we looked at the entire city, but we focused on underutilized sites. So that would be sites that are, just have small businesses on a large piece of land, oftentimes with large surface parking lots. Most sites chosen were based on conversations with property owners and developers who contacted staff to express an interest in developing those sites. Sites, we, again, focused on sites also near high-quality transit, because that's very desirable. And then in notifying these property owners, we sent two rounds of letters to them and did not hear any concerns that their properties were on our list. And being on the inventory does not preclude other uses from being developed other than housing, so the sites won't be limited by being in the inventory, but it does represent staff's best estimate for development based on the state's guidelines. So now I'm going to go over some of the housing programs. So each jurisdiction must identify specific programs in its housing element that will allow it to implement the stated policies and achieve the stated goals and objectives. Programs must include specific actions, steps, the locality will take to implement its policies and achieve its goals and objectives. Programs must also include a specific timeframe for implementation, identify the agencies or officials responsible for implementation, describe the jurisdiction's specific role in the implementation, and whenever possible, identify a specific measurable outcomes. So what I've chosen here on the slide is just a few sample programs... So what I've chosen here on the slide is just a few sample programs that are from the housing element. This is, again, very high level. So the first one is really to review our design standards for compliance with the state law and adopt objective design standards. I'm sure you guys might have heard that phrase, the objective design standard. That's something that we'll need. The next one is to join with other cities in San Mateo County to hire a shared housing staff to implement affordable housing programs and help manage affordable housing within the city. The next one is support legal counsel and advocacy assistance for renters and residents with disproportionate housing needs, participate in regional down payment assistance program, and support social services for housing and homeless prevention. And these are just, again, a few examples of programs that we're looking at, and you know, we'll ask council to fund these over the eight-year cycle to help improve housing opportunities in the city. So now I want to go over the state review timeline for this. So what does the process look like? The state has a very specific timeline that they set out for housing element adoption. First, in May of this, of last year, through June, we did the 30-day public review draft that we released, and we came to council, and we announced that release of that draft. And then, once we got comments during that public review period, we submitted to HCD after we made some minor revisions based upon the public input, and we submitted to HCD on July 8th, and that was for a 90-day review. Then we received HCD's comments back on October of last year, and then we were busy revising the draft, as Peter said, from October through December, and then we reposted a new draft in response to HCD's comments on December 30th. And adoption is anticipated for tonight, and then the second submittal to HCD would be between now and the 31st of this month. So HCD approval is not required for our housing element adoption, but HCD certification is required to have a compliant housing element. So a little bit about the comments that we received from HCD in their October letter. While HCD concluded that the draft document met many of the statutory requirements, they identified revisions that they believe are necessary before the agency would certify the housing element, and they organized their comments in different topic areas. I'm going to go over some of their comments, just at a very high level. So some of HCD's comments only required technical or clerical revisions, such as additional data and information to an HCD's opinion, comply with state law, such as affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis. Other comments call for more robust city administrative efforts to encourage and facilitate housing development. Some comments were more substantive policy concerns regarding issues such as the city's development standards and permit procedures. Staff sorted all of these comments into a table and provided a response to each one, and that is also attached to the staff report. And then, again, we revised the document itself to respond to those comments the best we could. So I won't discuss all the comments here, but the letter is attached to the staff report if you're interested. In total, there were lots of edits to the document, though we maintained, as Peter said, the basic gist of what you saw in draft form back in May. So now we're going to move into the override process, and I'm going to turn it over to Peter here for this portion.
Yes, at this point, this is the part where we're going to shift into talking about the subject matter for which one of the council members has a conflict, and so would ask that council member to recuse themselves.
And the person is? No, it's me. So you were building it up. So it was already alluded to in the staff report, that given the proximity of my residence to the Tanfran site specifically, that the fact that my home is directly involved in the proposed override of the Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the SFO Airport Land Use Plan, I will be recusing myself from consideration on that aspect only of this agenda item, and returning after the city council takes action on that issue without my involvement. The hearing on that component of the housing element item will be segment, which has been stated, from the balance of the item and taken first without my involvement. The vice mayor will then go ahead and proceed and take over the meeting. Once that has concluded, then I will return back, and that's my advice, and I'm able to be in the room or out, but I will be stepping down from the dais so that it can continue. And Mr. Vice Mayor, if you could, please.
Thank you. Give the mayor a moment to skedaddle. All right, so we will now open the public hearing on the proposed override of the Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the SFO Airport Land Use Plan, and so I would ask staff to present their report on the Airport Land Use Commission override component of this item.
Thank you. So I'm going to start this portion of the presentation with a map, just showing you guys where the sites lie in relationship to the airport noise contours. So these noise contours from flights taking off at SFO are shown, so you can see the overall housing sites that are impacted by the noise. This map also shows San Bruno has many existing housing units already in the flight path and the noise contours, and those primarily houses located in the San Bruno Park and Bel Air Park neighborhoods. So the two, oh, there's that. So the two sites in question that are impacted by the noise contours are the Shopset Tanfran, which is Site 14 in the site inventory, and the Pet Hospital, which is Site 19 in the So the noise contours are for 70 decibels and higher, and according to the SFO ALUCP, which is their airport plan, housing is an incompatible use within this noise contour. So Tanfran site itself, I just wanted to cover that real briefly, because ABAG, when they, when we were assigned the housing units that we were assigned for our RENA, they identified specifically this site as being a development site, and it was part of their planned Bay Area 2050, which we heard about a little bit earlier today, but this is obviously a different component of that. It is their long-range planning document for the Bay Area, and also putting housing at Tanfran also met their greenhouse gas emissions targets, just because it's above a barge station and proximate to transit. It is one of the primary reasons why San Bruno received the higher RENA allocation that we did. But the ABAG did not take into consideration this airport plan, which has this constraint on the site. So because these two sites are in the noise contours, the overall plan is considered to be inconsistent with the airport plan. And so therefore, the city will need to override the Airport Land Use Commission, AKA the ALUC, determination to move forward with the housing element as it is proposed. So a little bit about the ALUC override process itself. It requires, it's established in Public Utilities Code sections, and the city has this to avail itself to. They can override an ALUC determination and proceed with the project, but doing so does require three mandatory steps. It requires, one, to hold a public hearing on the proposed override action, two, making specific findings that is consistent with the purposes of the Airport and Land Use Commission statutes, and then three, approval of the action by a two-thirds vote of the local agency's governing body. The Public Utilities Code section also further states that the override process requires two council meetings. The first meeting and the process is for the council to adopt a resolution, making an intent, draft findings, making an intent to override the ALUC, and that meeting happened in November of last year. And then after that meeting, after the council makes that determination, we have to send that over to, that resolution and that decision over to the ALUC that made the determination in the first place for a 30-day comment period, and also to Caltrans Division of Aeronautics. And then once 45 days have elapsed, the city can make a final decision to override. So this is the override process that we've done to this point. So again, in October of last year, the Airport Land Use Committee made a recommend, passed a resolution making a recommendation determining that our housing element was inconsistent with their land use plan, and then that was forwarded to the full Airport Land Use Commission, and they held that meeting on November 10th of last year, and at that meeting, the Airport Land Use Commission found our housing element to be inconsistent with their airport plan. And then, following that, the council held their meeting on November 15th, declaring an intent to do the override of those, of that ALUC decision. And then on November 16th, after the council had made their decision for an intent to override, that resolution was forwarded to both, again, the ALUC and Caltrans for the required 30-day comment period. So the implications of an override, there are two key outcomes of a local agency override of an Airport Land Use Commission decision. The proposed land use action may proceed, subject to local agency review and permitting processes, as if it had been found consistent with ALUCP by the ALUC. And then, two, the agency operating the airport shall be immune from liability for damages to property or personal injury caused by or resulting directly or indirectly from the public agency's decision to override the commission's action or recommendation. So now I'm going to go over the comment letters that we received during that 30-day comment period. So the city did receive two letters, one from SFO and the other from Caltrans Division of Aeronautics, both objecting to our proposed override. They had concerns with placing housing in what they thought was a very noisy area, and they, in their opinion, also thought that the city's resolution and findings in that resolution were insufficient to support an override. The second letter came from the Caltrans Division of Aeronautics, and it posited the same, had the same opinion of the city's findings. And in response to that, the city did revise our findings in the motion that is before you tonight for the override. And so we feel that it can move forward now, and so we've taken their comment into consideration in our revised findings. And here's some of the benefits of having housing at Tanfran and Pet Hospital sites. It's situated near high-quality transit, including the barge station, El Camino Real, with high-quality frequent bus service, and it's only about .4 miles to the Caltrain Station downtown. It's also surrounded by an arterial street network of collector's streets. It's also very close to the freeways, so it's ideally situated from a transit perspective. So the basis for our recommendation for the override tonight is, we do believe that orderly development near the airport can be achieved. We can attenuate the noise inside the buildings to 45 decibels using modern construction insulation. And navigation easement can be granted to the city and county of San Francisco operating SFO. It's also difficult to find another location for the one, over 1,000 units that we planned for these two sites. And then, you know, the additional review, so another override additional review by the Airport Land Use Committee will happen, Commission, excuse me, will happen on a project-by-project level for these projects, so this is not the end. Those projects will have to go through individual overrides when there's, going through the review process. And each project, when they do, will include an indemnification agreement with the city of San Bruno prior to issuance of building permits, ensuring that liability related to noise is assumed by the project itself. So for these reasons, we do feel that the council can avail itself of this override and complete the process that was started in November. So, okay, so this is going to be the last slide for this portion of it, but included with the housing element is a general plan amendment to policy HS40 of the general plan. This policy states that to prohibit new residential development within the 70-plus airport CNEL areas as dictated by the Airport Land Use Commission infill criteria, and so we're amending that general plan policy with the underlined section, which says unless on a project-by-project basis, a proposed residential development is approved through the local agency override process, consistent with the Public Utilities Code Section 21675.1. The ALUC also reviewed this language and was okay and found it to be compliant with their plan. So this, we're going to pause right here.
Thank you, Michael. So if we could get the slides back, now we go into kind of the procedural part of the override. So as said at the very beginning, we're going to take the override processes, recommended action, questions, public comment and action, separate. That's what we're doing right now, and in the staff report, there are three recommendations. They're all on the screen. Two of them we're not talking about right now, so they're grayed out. The resolution we're asking council to act on is not grayed out, so that you're able to see it. We can come back to this if you need it, but as I said, it is in your written staff report. And just in general, asking that council provide any questions. We go into the public comment period, and then council take action on the override, with the note that all the questions and comments should be focused on the override at this time. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation for the override section.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive report. So to my colleagues, does anyone have any questions, and limited only to the Airport Land Use override? Land Use override portion of what we've heard tonight? Any questions for staff?
Through the chair, Vice Mayor. Part of the FAA noise reduction program are insulation and windows. So in addition to the quality of the insulation, assuming we are moving forward with the override, are we going to require any other requirements to the developer to meet that, under that 45 decibel, you know, in addition to the, to the insulation? Are they also going to, part of the requirement will be the double, I think for FAA noise reduction, they do like not just double pane but four pane windows? And is the FAA going to, if we're overriding, is the FAA going to support that also? What they, you know, they are existingly doing to the residents around that aircraft?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarez, Jevon Grogan, City Manager. Good question. I think I want to begin the answer to that by being very clear that what we're doing tonight is approving the housing element and the override, not the, a potential project on Tanfran. And a lot of the very good questions that you asked will be answered through the review and approval process or consideration for a Tanfran development, but specifically to what the sound attenuation would be. Certainly, there will be significant regulations and proposals around sound attenuation that city staff will review. We will absolutely have consultants review. And all of that will have to go back, as staff mentioned, there will be another process through SFO and the Airport Land Use Commission. How they decide on that, I don't want to sort of hypothesize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, then we will, we will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard regarding the override of the Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the SFO Airport Land Use Plan? And so we're only going to be taking comments relating to the proposed Airport Land Use Commission override portion of the presentation at this time. Comments on the other aspects of the, of this item will be taken separately after council has concluded consideration of the Airport Land Use Commission override. So do we have any speaker cards or folks on Zoom?
We have no speaker cards, and there are no virtual hands raised.
With no, with no public comment, then may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I second.
I need the motion first.
Oh, I thought I heard him in a motion. I'm sorry.
You can make the motion to close the public hearing.
Go ahead, make it.
I move the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those, oh, we need a roll call vote for everything with this item, correct?
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Medina is recused from this vote.
Yes, 4-0, motion passes. All right. So are there any further comments from members of the council on this item? Okay, so we will entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I'd like to motion to adopt the resolution making findings and overriding the Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with respect to noise policies for San Bruno's draft 2023-2031 housing element update.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is that, was that motion sufficient? Wonderful. So can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Medina is recused from this vote.
Thank you very much. So motion passes 4-0 with the mayor recused, and I will turn the meeting back over to
Thank you very much for your assistance in conducting that, Mr. Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Now we will open the public hearing on the proposed housing element and related general plan amendment and mitigated negative declarations. May we have additional information from ours, planning staff, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So now I'm going to go over the, the environmental review that was done for the housing element to analyze any potential environmental impacts. So for the project, we did an initial study, and that resulted in a mitigated net, negative declaration. And with all impacts could be that were identified in the initial study could be mitigated to a less significant level with implementation of the mitigation measures. And those are attached to the document as the mitigated nega, excuse me, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So impacts in the following areas were identified: air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards and hazardous materials, noise and vibration, and transportation. So this document was made available for a public comment period for 30 days during December and January, and also a notice of intent was filed with the state clearinghouse. During the 30-day comment period, the city received two written comments from the public. The letters came from SFO and the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. In response to the letters, staff made text edits to the MND itself, but the content and conclusion of the analysis did not change. Staff also prepared a response to the comments, which are attached to the environmental document before you. So staff is recommending the adoption of the environmental document and application of the mitigation measures and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So on January 12th, the housing element was reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission passed two resolutions recommending council to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the, which is the SEQA document. And then they also passed a resolution recommending the council adopt the 2023 to 2031 housing element update, replacing the 2015 to 2023 housing element, and instruct staff to forward it to HCD for review. And, and they recommended adoption of the general plan text amendments that I spoke of earlier. Additionally, they had additional comments about it that I'm forwarding to you now. Incorporate the mitigation monitoring identified in the MND into the housing element as city policies applicable to the development of the sites and the inventory. This has been done, and this is at the recommendation of the city attorney. Their next recommendation was to incorporate additional information into the housing element to bolster the justifications for development and/or redevelopment of potential or developed sites in the inventory to the extent possible prior to submittal to HCD. And then their last comment was for the city council to consider adoption of a jobs-to-housing ratio-based housing target for the Tanfran site rather than a flat number of units, which we've identified as 1,000 units. tonight's recommended action, again, so this is where we are now, is to adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and there's a resolution for that. We've already done the grayed out one, so we're going to go down now to the third resolution, which is to adopt a general plan text amendment to policy HS40 and adopt the 2023 to 2031 housing element with findings that the housing element substantially complies with housing element law, and authorize staff to submit the housing element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for certification. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much for your report. It is appreciated. Let's see now if there are any members of the public here or virtual that wish to speak, please.
There is a virtual hand, and Katie Hofstadter. I've brought you in if you're ready to speak.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Hamilton, and council members. My name is Katie Hofstadter, and I work with Strata Investment Group. We are partnered with Alexandria on the redevelopment of the Tanfran site. We are very excited about the Tanfran redevelopment project and have spent a lot of time working on the site plan and within the site's constraints to determine what goes where and at what density. Our preliminary project application was submitted in October 2022 and envisions a mix of uses for Tanfran, including housing. As proposed, the redevelopment plan includes roughly 1,000 new units of housing in three separate buildings, which is consistent with the housing element update and will bring a meaningful amount of new housing to San Bruno. We believe that the proposed design includes an ideal mix of housing, retail, and life science for feasibility. We look forward to kicking off the environmental review for the Tanfran site specifically in the near term, which will further study the proposed uses and densities on the site. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers, please?
Yes, the next speaker is Noel Langmack. Noel, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Hi, hello, council. My name's Noel Langmack. I would like to speak in favor of the Planning Commission's suggestion to put a jobs-to-housing ratio cap on the Tanfran project. I think we're very aware of the job-to-housing ratio imbalance in the broader Bay Area region, and so putting together a project that could have a significant rebound jobs-to-housing ratio, really anything over four to one would do a disservice to the city of San Bruno. So I'd strongly recommend adopting that recommendation from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers, please?
No, there are no other virtual speakers, or we also have no speaker cards.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from colleagues? Vice Mayor?
Do we need to close the public hearing first?
Why don't we go for questions from council members?
You got it. So should I, so should I assume regarding the second recommendation from the Planning Commission, to the extent possible prior to submittal, incorporate additional information to the site inventory analysis? Should I assume that there was, there was not sufficient time to, to complete that? Or was it completed?
Darcy Smith, Assistant City Manager. There's not a lot of time. Yeah, and also I think we, we did the SEQA analysis based on this document. We pushed it out for public comment late December, so at this point, really not inclined to make substantial changes. That said, if we gain any new information, so for example, if a property owner were to have contacted us before tonight's meeting saying, hey, we have major concerns with, you know, potential and including this on the suitable sites, we would have pivoted. But as the presenter, Mr. Smith, said, we have, we have notified property owners. We've not heard from them. We've also not had any public comments, absent what you heard tonight. So at this point, we want to put forth what's before you for the state review, and, you know, if we do get additional review comments from the state, need to make changes, then we'll evaluate that at that time.
Got it. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar?
I was curious, and also related to the Planning Commission's suggestions. Are we aware of any cities that have faced a builder's remedy type case, and do we know what, what they used as a basis for their, for their claim?
City Attorney?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Medina and Councilmember Salazar. I wanted to introduce my colleague, David Snow, who has been working with the city on the housing element, and he has some information, he can provide additional information. I think, and he can confirm this, most cases where we've heard of the builder's remedy being potentially exercised in Southern California, but if we could turn it over to Dave, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, through the chair. There have been a couple of assertions of builder's remedies in Southern California. At this point, I'd say they're early on. The cities are still working through the issues associated with the, with the assertions by the property owners and the developers. And it really depends that factually, each of those cases is a little bit different. I would say certainly a timely adoption of a housing element with the findings that the, the element is in substantial compliance with state housing law is a recommended step at this point to provide the strongest defense against that type of assertion.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. I just wanted a little clarification on that. And then also the, just the concept in general of establishing a jobs-to-housing ratio seems interesting. And I know for Tanfran, it's not something we want to pursue at this point because there's already been a lot of documentation around it. I know our housing number really depends on, on those number of units, but it does seem that that imbalance is what put us in the situation that we're in, and keeping an eye on that, maybe not for, for this particular project, but in other projects where we're potentially removing housing, that that should be a consideration and maybe something that we can have a broad policy on going forward where that's, it's considered.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar. As projects come forward, we can certainly look at that. I know a lot of the analysis around the jobs-housing balance is that it is very, very, very difficult to do at a project level, hard to do at a city level, and really needs to be at, at a more regional level. And every project is very unique, and so absolutely, we always concerned about the amount of jobs that are created, but we will certainly continue to look at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? With there being no other questions and there being no other public comments at this time, is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made, Hamilton, seconded Salazar, to close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez? Councilmember Marty Medina?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes. Finally, are there any other final comments from colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Medina, please.
I just want to thank everyone. This is a huge task, just in case. This is, this is for the public, this is the housing element, and this doesn't justify our, the amount of work that it took to get here was amazing. So I just wanted to acknowledge all the work from staff, the Planning Commission, their comments, and as we go forward of making sure that we have more housing. Thank you.
Yeah, and well, let's take votes first. I always like getting those out of the way. Thank you for your comments. At this time, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion regarding the mitigated negative
Through the chair?
Please.
I move, I move that the, to adopt the resolution of the, for a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the 2023 to 2031 housing element update.
Second.
Motion, Vice Mayor, seconded Marty Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Medina?
Yes. And then finally, the chair will go ahead and entertain a motion, if so be, regarding the housing element and general plan amendment. Any action? Vice Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you.
I would like to move to adopt the resolution, adopting a general plan amendment to policy I would like to move to adopt the resolution, adopting a general plan amendment to policy HS-40, adopting a general plan amendment to update the housing element of the general plan for the period 2023 to 2031, replacing the 2015 to 2023 housing element with findings of substantial compliance with state housing element law pursuant to Government Code Section 65585, and authorizing staff to submit the housing element update to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for review and certification.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. Vice Mayor motion, seconded, Salazar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez. Yes. Councilmember Marty Medina.
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Medina.
Yes. And now to say it again, now that this is, is thank you to all staff, those that have been with us, those that are new with us. This is something that is maybe not, everybody understands the complexity and the importance and meeting the deadline. And I was explaining to the city manager that somebody had told me that, you know, San Bruno did a good job, and they were comparing, they're not in elective office, so they have a neutral position, but that was also looking at another city, within our county, and said, you know, I think in this case, you folks did much better, and so I want to compliment staff for doing the work, the presentations, the time, the commitment, and getting it done, and getting it done on time. Thank you. With that, we will continue on to our agenda, and now we will move on to conduct of business, please.
Item eight, conduct of business, eight A, review commercial cannabis regulations.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, to the council and members of the public, Javon Grogan, City Manager. I'll just open this item very briefly. At our last city council meeting, there was a request and subsequent direction by the city council to bring back the city's commercial cannabis regulations. And so you have that before you in item eight A. In addition, since our last meeting, the city did review the current application package that we had out, and we did suspend all, we did suspend that process. And at the time that we suspended the process, we had not received any applications. Based on council's action tonight, if there are no changes to the regulations, we will announce a new submission date. If there are changes, we will process those changes. They will require a review by the Planning Commission and then action at the city council. And we will then issue a new application package with a new submission deadline. But we are here fully prepared to support you through your policy analysis. And I will now turn the presentation over to Peter Gilli, our Community and Economic Development Director, who will provide you a high-level overview of the current regulations as well as a number of slides on potential changes that were requested, and then facilitate your policy discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll be presenting the review of the city's commercial cannabis regulations. Go through the objective, go through some background. We'll skip through number three, the suspension of the operator's permit, because that was covered now. Go into talking about the suggested amendments and into the recommended action and questions. The objective is to review San Bruno's commercial cannabis regulations and to provide staff with direction on potential amendments. We'll start with the background. I'm going to try to give a little bit of the when, what, where, and how of our regulations. Start with the timeline. Back in 2018, council took action to prohibit all commercial cannabis uses in the city. In 2020, from April to July, council held six meetings for consideration of a ballot measure for either a tax or regulations. The actual ballot measure ended up just focusing on the tax. In November, the voters approved a 10% tax on commercial cannabis. In 2021, contract was initiated with a contract planning group to help with the creation of the ordinance. In 2022, in the first part of the year, completion of the regulations was made a goal of council. And in February, the first study session was held on the actual regulations. That led to, by the end of the year, hearings being held on the adoption of the ordinance regulations themselves, which went into effect in November. Now we are looking at having discussion about revising those regulations. The actual regulations themselves, the key point of the ordinance is that in its current form, there's a maximum of four commercial cannabis operations that would be allowed in the city. Up to three can be retail with limitations. One can be a distribution use also with limitations in the ordinance. The ordinance does not allow any of the other type of businesses that show on the screen, so no commercial cultivation, no manufacturing, no testing, no microbusinesses, which are combinations of multiple types of the business types. No temporary events and no cafes for onsite consumption. Only retail and distribution, again with limitations in the ordinance. High level, a cannabis retailer is a business that is selling either cannabis or cannabis products directly to customers. It's not a manufacturer of any goods. Manufacturing happens off-site. Entry to these facilities are restricted. That's a state law. These can include delivery services. There are state laws that now say those have to be allowed. And as noted earlier, our ordinance has a maximum of three in its current state. Then there's the distribution facility. These are the facilities that will purchase and sell and transport the goods between businesses, so between a manufacturer and the retailer. There is no interaction with the public, and our ordinance has a maximum of one being allowed in our industrial districts. There's also the topic of sensitive uses. The state recommends the use of buffers from sensitive uses. They don't require it, but it's highly encouraged. In the city regulations, the rules are that no cannabis business can be within 600 feet of a sensitive use. And the city's ordinance defines a sensitive use as a youth center, a daycare center, schools, parks, or public libraries. And so putting that all together, actually, have we passed out the maps? Okay. Putting that all together into a graphic, we have an updated map that reflects what the ordinance allows in its current form. Just for reference, when staff brings a map for PowerPoint, normally we have it so that north is up. We purposely, on this one, north is not up. North is really off to the side, and that's so that the screen can show more of the map. On your actual printed map, north is generally pointing up. This map shows all the different areas. We're using color coding to assist in the conversation. As we said, right now, the ordinance allows a maximum of four. Up to three retail can be located in the blue or the yellow, on the blue or yellow sites. Those are in the transit corridor, in downtown, or at the shops at Tanforan. Distribution up to one is allowed in the purple parcels. Those are the industrial lands north of 380. And anytime one of these parcels, whether it's yellow, blue, or purple, if they're in a sensitive use buffer, that site's not allowed. It's off the table. So the only sites that are allowed are the ones in color, not in a buffer. The actual process for receiving a permit, the operators, the applicants would have to file an operator's permit application. Those will be prescreened by staff. On a pass fail, you either meet all the application requirements or you don't. Then all of those that do meet the application requirements would be brought to council and presented to council, who will, at a noticed meeting, will select the applications that would be awarded an operator's permit. Then those applicants would have to file for a conditional use permit. That will go to the Planning Commission and then to the council for final action. Upon approval of the conditional use permit, then that applicant will receive their operator's permit. They'll also need a business license, and they also have permits they have to do with the state. But from a land use perspective, that handles what the process with the city is. Now, the application requirements are quite extensive, arguably more than we would require for any other business. There's documentation for background checks of the ownership group, proof of capitalization that they have the funding in order to do the business plan that they have to provide us. They have to have proof of either ownership of a property or lease agreement or a letter of intent to lease, so they have to prove they have a location. They need a plan that describes their hiring practices as well as what type of community benefits they'll provide. They need plans for how they will be compatible with the surrounding area, odor control, safety in hazmat, hazardous materials, I should say, security. And that's in addition to just the basic plans of the site and the building and how they would change the building, if at all. So that's quite extensive. Going to skip through the suspension of the operator's permit section because that's been covered. And then that brings us to the section where we talk about the suggested amendments. And so this is a revised map. The yellow sites are taken off because the yellow sites are the ones that were suggested to not be allowed. So if you look at the paper map, that still has the yellow on it, again, the suggestion was those sites in downtown and at the shops at Tanforan would not be allowed. The maximum number of businesses under the suggested amendments would go from four, up to four, to up to two. Retail would go from up to three to up to one, and only on the blue parcels. And then the distribution could actually be up to two. Both of the sites could be distribution. Those are still located in the industrial area north of 380, and no change is made to the buffers. So you have your paper map. We can bring these maps up as well in the discussion as we move forward. So that brings us to tonight's recommended action, and that is to review the regulations and provide staff with any direction on proposed changes. And with that, that concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions on the presentation from colleagues, council? At this time. If there are no questions, let's see if we have members of the public speaker cards that are present, as well as if persons who are on Zoom, if you could please raise your virtual hand now, and so that we can see how many speakers we have, please.
We have one speaker card, and we currently have two virtual hands raised.
Thank you very much. And if we could start with our speaker here.
Mike.
Groganis.
Gwengona.
We could just say, I think he'll say, Mike's okay.
Mike's fine. Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to speak to you again. Again, I speak to you in my capacity as a Daly City resident, a former council member, former mayor, a person that has gone through the kind of deliberations that you're about to go through today. I understand what it's like to have to be in a position where you're at to have to make these kinds of decisions. And I'll be very brief in what I've read about your statute. I've watched the way that it's developed over time, and I do understand the political overtones of how these things develop. I will say this, though. The way that you've drafted your current ordinance would still allow you to do the same things that you want to do by limiting yourself. And I'll explain that. The language that you've used as far as having up to four and wanting to cut it to up to two, I see that as a way of cutting your own discretion. I mean, if you don't get the kind of quality operator that you want in this city, then you will not allow for. But to limit yourself to two, it limits your own discretion and may even limit your pool of applicants to come in. When we dealt with this issue in Daly City, it was broad. Again, we started with the state statute, 600 feet from sensitive uses. We, as a policy decision, we expanded it so that it would, nursery schools, preschools, we expanded it even. But we didn't limit ourselves in the way of discretion. We didn't limit the number. We limited areas. And I see what you're trying to do in this situation. I would urge you to leave yourself open to discretion. Be able to use your discretion. I've seen the way you deliberate. You're very transparent. If you don't want four in your city, don't limit yourself by saying, you know, we'll only allow two. If you don't get the kind of operator that you want in this city, don't, I wouldn't award any of them. So I understand the spirit of what you're trying to do and what you're trying to communicate to your people, but I would say from a policymaker's perspective, anything that you do that limits your discretion is something I would like to have, as a council member, I'd like to have as much discretion as possible to be able to craft the policy. So this allows you, the current law, from what I'm understanding from staff, the current state of the law is, is that you've given your policymakers a broad range of discretion to use in this, and it's specifically with the language it uses. So I would urge that if you're thinking about limiting yourself today, you can limit yourself by operation of law. You can just, you can look at the 20 or so that you're going to get, or even the two that you get, and you may use your own discretion without limiting yourself at this time, without handcuffing yourself, and without limiting the pool. That's also important. You want to be able to provide a level playing field for as many players as possible so that you can use your discretion to limit them, to then look at them and then measure them all against each other and get yourself the best possible operator. The second part is purely economic. I'm from Daly City, and we needed tax revenue. So we were looking specifically for as much tax revenue as possible. So again, I want to thank you for your time, and this is a great place to have a city council meeting, so many screens and everything. So I'm very happy to be here. Thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck on your deliberations today.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
We have no more speaker cards. Next, we'll be moving to virtual hands. Our first speaker is Connor. Connor, are you there? Can you hear me?
Can you see me?
No, we can't see you, but we can hear you. So go ahead.
All right. My name's Connor Johnston. I am a San Francisco native. I own a couple social equity cannabis dispensaries in San Francisco, and full disclosure, may be part of an application team in San Bruno. But I also actually used to work for the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco and got into cannabis by way of consulting. So as a license and regulation consultant, I've worked in every major market in California and a whole bunch of states around the country. And one of the things that is always important, not only for dispensary, potential dispensary owners, but from a public policy standpoint, is you want to think about how many dispensaries are you going to be allowing per person. So I'm going to throw some numbers at you here, but just for context, Berkeley has about one store per 29,000 people. Tracy in the East Bay, or I don't know if that counts as the East Bay, has about one per 19,000 people. Washington State is about one store per 16,000. Sacramento is about one per 13,000. Pacifica is about one per 9,000. San Francisco is a San Francisco is an ever-changing landscape, but it's on its way to about one store per 8,000 people. Alaska is a little bit below that. Colorado is about 7,000. And then, Montana, Oklahoma, yes, Oklahoma, and Oregon are all in this one store per 6,000 people range. So, if San Bruno goes down to only one store maximum, you would have one store per 43,000, give or take, people. And to the extent you're trying to minimize community impacts from things like double parking or it being too busy, you're actually making the situation worse by having only one store in a city of that size, to say nothing of the fact that the seventh busiest airport in the country is right across the street, right? So, what the situation that you would be creating with only one store is it would have essentially a monopoly in that market, which is bad for consumers, bad for patients, because there's less competition on price and service, but it would also just be overcrowded. The things that you're trying to address in terms of parking and impact, again, would be worse than if you have two or three stores. So, I would encourage you to keep the number at three, or if you're going to change it, at least make it two, so there's some good competition in the marketplace. And definitely, definitely, I want to associate myself with Mike who spoke before me. I might move to Daly City so I can vote for him because his point is right on. Under the current legislation, you retain all of the discretionary authority already. So, all this would really be doing is delaying the process, tying your hands and disqualifying some potentially good applicants. And lastly, I'll just say, if a dispensary operator is not good, if they're not living up to the standards that you expect, you don't renew their permit. So, you retain that discretion throughout the life of the business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Virginia Yank. Virginia, are you ready?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thanks. I did send letters to the councilors, and I'm going to just go over it quickly. And this is my thoughts on this subject. I do not believe in fairness to the San Bruno community that we, as citizens, voted on having some cannabis shop in San Bruno. To the best of my recollection, San Bruno did a survey a while back, and it did not ask in that survey if we wanted to even have a cannabis store here in San Bruno. The vote was more about the taxes that we would get. I question who determined that we would need four dispensaries here in town. We are a small town, so do we need that many? I can't believe that 20,000 people are going to the cannabis store. Seems to me that two would work fine, one for pickup and another for dispensary. Did the citizens decide this? Did the councilors decide? Or did the city manager decide to have four? I'm wondering why you would want to put a dispensary near Tanfran. There are young kids hanging out there, particularly on the upper level. And what happens if you open a dispensary outside the mall, say, near town center? The plan for Tanfran to build commercial buildings as well as housing, what about the kids that will be living in that new housing of 1,000 units? Too close for comfort, in my opinion. Last but not least, actually, there's two more things. I would think that would be better not to have any if we must use the El, if we must, let's use the El Camino corridor, not San Mateo Avenue. San Mateo Avenue is used by many students going back and forth from Bel Air, going Allen School and so forth. Keep our kids out of trouble. That's why, so why invite trouble? And also, my last thought is, there's a row of buildings on Sneak Lane right opposite the National Cemetery, near the VA offices, the VA Medical Office. To me, that would be a safe place to put a dispensary or to put a shop. Plenty of free parking and plenty available. Thanks for your time. Bye-bye.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Blanco.
Please give us one moment. We're just trying to give Jennifer Blanco permission to speak.
No problem.
We are unable to promote Jennifer Blanco at the moment. Jennifer, if you would like to provide a public comment, you are welcome to email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@sanbruno.ca.gov. We are receiving an error message and are unable to provide permission to speak. And we have no other public comment.
Okay, there are no other virtual hands or members of the public that are present with us at this time?
No, there are not.
And we won't promote Ms. Blanco. So, with that, we will go ahead and conclude the public comments at this time and bring it back to council. I just did want to make, I think the first two speakers were just kind of having similar commentary on their items, but the last speaker, I did want to make it clear that it is not the city manager that approved this. The city manager does the direction of the council, and he has brought forward what has been requested of him, so it is not by the city manager's doozy doing. He puts together staff reports. He did not make a recommendation nor did he approve this item. So, we are back to council for comments at this time. Any comments? None? Okay. So, if there are no comments, oh.
Hold on. I would assume we are supposed to give some kind of direction?
Yes.
So, I have a couple of comments. So, my first comment was actually made very eloquently by our first two public commenters regarding limiting our discretion by limiting the amount. As stated, by allowing up to four does not mean we will have four. It allows us to get a greater pool of applicants and choose between them to get the best one. I made several comments in prior meetings on this topic regarding, you know, the two broad buckets, general flavors of dispensaries. There's ones that look like the Apple Store, and there's ones that look like Smoke Matter. And, you know, we would look, and we would be able, as a council, to look at the applications and look at the ones that have the best security practices, the best track record, the best look and feel, the best location from the sites available, and make our determination there. And I don't think it's necessary for us to limit our maximums in this way when we have the discretion to allow zero if we don't get qualified applicants. My other, this is more of a question for my colleagues who want to make these recommended changes, is I want to hear the reasoning for remove, over half, almost two-thirds of downtown is already precluded from having a cannabis business because of sensitive uses that surround it. So, that leaves the northern portion of downtown, and I'd like to hear what the reasoning is for wanting to exclude that, especially given that the largest business in that area is a casino, which has been successfully operating and successfully keeping young people out through simple security measures that would also be in play at any cannabis dispensary that would open there.
Other questions or comments from colleagues? None others at this time? Okay. I would go ahead and say, when you talk about the casino, when you say it's a simple security system, I would say a casino, out of the state regulations, is far from simple. It's face recognition, it's security. I think it's a little unique, and I know, you know, in this city, too, there used to be two casinos. And when Casino Royale went out on El Camino Real, the community didn't want another one again, just as Talbot's, when the gun store went out, the community didn't want another one again. So, anyway, that was just because of that comment, but I believe their system is...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, councilmember.
Sure, sure. I was hoping to hear from others, but I'll go ahead and say what I've been thinking, and it's understandable for a councilman, councilwoman, mayor to feel that they don't want this, or maybe to reduce it. And that's where we're here now. And for myself, I believe in having options. I believe in having choices. When you reduce things to one, you don't have much of a choice anymore. And to piggyback on the downtown that would be allowed on the northern side, we do have a casino. Some people don't like casinos, but some people could decide, "I'm not going to go to a casino," and that's their choice. In the vicinity of the casino, there's a smoke shop that's going in, apparently, I believe, brand new in that vicinity. There's a hookah lounge, a massage parlor, probably regulated. Can't be going in there as a kid to smoke hookah. And people have a choice to actually not go. There's liquor stores downtown. You're not allowed to purchase alcohol if you're a minor. And security measures in place, there's really high consequences for a minor to, they're not allowed in dispensaries, just it's not going to happen. But anyhow, I do, public speaker today, about what we can and cannot do as a council. As the council, the previous council brought it to this point. It didn't happen. It took longer, and here we are. So, I think we could, I think I'm going to wait to make a motion because it's very clear to me that I don't have, at least I'm thinking I don't, I don't want to waste people's time. So, I'll wait and to respond to a comment from my colleagues, I hope to hear something.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to circle back on the comments of one of our callers regarding eliminating the Tanfran. I do agree because I, we have children, we have high school students that do hang out in the mall, and if we do have stores or dispensary in the mall, it wouldn't prevent them to basically distance themselves within the 500-feet limit. In addition to the downtown area, it's the same concept where children can walk on downtown area and basically not limit themselves to walk in or basically linger around the dispensary. They go through the same process. Even if we limit two stores, we could receive 100 applicants and still go through the same process, and the city and the staff can choose the best applicant to operate in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was going back, I had a note I didn't say, is I don't know if Redwood City was commented on about the speaker, and they have 81,000, according to Google, 81,643, and they only have a handful. So, based on their ratio, it's quite higher, but I don't believe that they were articulated. The other, also that I like areas that have a, you know, on El Camino Real, there's a good flow of traffic. There's, I think, a higher police presence going back and forth. I find that a little more comforting. Obviously, they're close to San Bruno Avenue as well. I think the other thing, too, is, you know, and now things opening back up, and now we're going to various activities again or speaking to other colleagues, you know, it is a fact that there has been a situation in Pacifica. There is a fact that there has been some situations in San Mateo, not because they have a dispensary, but because there's been other activities that's been brought in. So, I also believe, like I said, starting off, if it comes back and says, "You know what?" This is, I'll use your comment, "This is the Apple Store. This has been a great partner with the community." Correct me, but the council can come back...
To that comment, in order to raise it back up, to raise it up again, you know, if we end up in that situation, we would need to agendize it, put it to, request staff to come back with a report, with a study session like this to start with, and have that discretion to add another one now or add another one later. So, if we want to walk before we run, then we would only approve one or two now or in the near future. See how it goes, and then we can decide to approve other ones as applications come in or as, you know, the argument about, as far as Tanfran goes, I'm not going to die on that hill. I'm fine with proceeding there. But using the argument that we should exclude all of downtown because children walk through it is odd because then that means that, so children don't walk on El Camino, children don't walk on San, that if you're under 21, you cannot enter into a dispensary. You also cannot loiter outside of a dispensary. People can't smoke cannabis in public outside of a dispensary or anywhere else in public. So, it's one of those things where, you know, I'll make the same argument that I made last time, if this isn't for you, just keep walking. This is one of those things. It's not, that's been my point all along, the same argument for why downtown should be eliminated, given that most of downtown is already eliminated.
Are there any comments? I mean, any further comments from colleagues? Okay. So, this is, again, the report has been given. It is to review that and give direction. We'll be with a motion, of course, but to give directions, that needs to be articulated and then put a form in the motion of whatever is chosen. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I believe I've made most of my points at the last time, and I do appreciate staff's speedy return with the recommendations that I made. I definitely appreciate that. And to be perfectly blunt, if it was really up to me, this wouldn't be happening at all, and I think, so I believe what I'm putting forward addresses a number of the issues. It does provide us an opportunity for the tax revenue, regardless of what I personally think about the industry in general. I do believe this will be the next big tobacco, and we are, you know, opening an opportunity to profit from that. And I question whether or not that's the type of city that we want to be. Other cities are doing it currently. 60% of the cities in California don't. But clearly, there's been a motion to move forward, bringing forward the ordinance as staff has presented them tonight.
A second.
There's a motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Excuse me with all due respect, councilmembers, I apologize. I couldn't log on. For some reason, I wasn't able to speak. Would you be able to allow me to still speak?
I want to get concurrence from council because we are in a motion if we want to roll it back.
To the chair. I would say since the speaker made the effort to drive in when she was having technical issues, we could make an exception in this case.
Are we okay with that, colleagues? Okay. And I think, I know you went to speed limit, so I appreciate you coming all the way. Please, go ahead. The city attorney. Is that all right?
Absolutely. It's at the chair's discretion.
Please, go ahead.
I'm just glad there was no police officers following me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Blanco. I am a longtime resident. I grew up here in the avenues. I now live up by Scotland College. However, I also serve as a trustee for the San Bruno Park School District here, and I just wanted to, I rushed down here. I apologize. I wasn't able to log on, but I needed to come down and share with you my concerns, also as a parent. So I applaud councilmember Salazar for bringing this back for your, for the amendment. However, I do agree with him. I wish that our city would not move forward with bringing cannabis dispensaries. Here in our community, we have four smoke shops here in San Bruno where have, where kids, I applaud the previous speaker because I feel her frustration and I heard her anger through her comments and her tone, so I thank her so much for sharing with the fact that we have kids who are driving, I'm sorry, who are walking by liquor stores, walking by the smoke shops. I don't care what anyone says. Marijuana is the gateway drug. Alcohol is the gateway drug. We just had, we're still in the, in the end of coming out of a pandemic. We still are living through epidemic and pandemic with drugs with our kids. In Pacifica, I believe they have four on Palmetto, which is just down the street is IBL, Ingrid Big Lacy Middle School. I don't know how that's working out for Pacifica, but we have kids who are smoking in our schools. They're vaping, vaping nicotine, vaping the marijuana. They're from, they're, our kids are even moving up to doing cocaine. And what angers me is that we don't have any preventative measures, lack of educational programs for our kids, especially our Latino kids who predominantly live in the avenues where I came from, where I am bred from. And it angers me because we're not going to, I don't feel that we're going to put, we're going to have enough educational programs in place. I heard you, councilmember Hamilton, you spoke about how, or even you, councilmember Medina, about the kids are walking by this. Yeah, you're right, they are, but you know what's subliminating? Subliminally, they are seeing this every day, and there's nothing there to protect them. I feel that if we, I know that we're going to have these cannabis dispensaries come to our city, but we need to put some preventative measures. Delivery service, how are we going to ensure that our kids aren't having this delivered? Because kids can use an adult name and have it delivered. Are we going to have, I know in the hate, they have gun carrying security guards. Are we going to have that here? And so a question I had for you is.
Need to wind it over the three.
Well, I do believe you had, you gave gentleman Mike 45 seconds. So I have a question for the city manager. If you can answer me sometime later, not tonight, obviously. But there is some, with the monies, with the taxes, how much percentage of that tax, I believe, has to go to some sort of education program? And who will oversee to ensure these programs? I think now more than ever, we do need parents' involvement, and we need to have some sort of prevention for our kids. I feel that we're gambling with their lives, and we're just perpetuating the school to prison pipeline. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Okay, we will bring it back to council. Okay.
Just for the record. All right. So with that, and before I make the motion again, I would also like to add, based on what the speaker just said, that, you know, the state did make promises about the revenue being used for specific purposes, including education around drug abuse. And I don't think any city that I know of has received any funding nor benefited from any programs that address that. And so as we move forward in this, and as we become active participants, I do want to make sure that we are going to hold the state accountable for the promises that made, that they made in getting this passed. You know, if they're not meeting their commitment, then they also need to be held accountable. So with that, I will remake my motion to move forward with the ordinance changes as proposed in the packet.
I repeat, second the motion.
There's a motion. Salazar's second. Alvarez, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
No.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Yes. Staff, is there any other information? Okay, that will take care of item A. We'll move on to item B, please.
Item B, introduce, read by title only and wait for the reading of an ordinance adding chapter 2.33 to the San Bruno Municipal Code adopting local contribution limits for city council elections.
Hello, Mayor Medina, city council members.
City attorney, please.
I'll give them a moment to, Trish Ortiz, city attorney, give them a moment to get the slide presentation up in front of you. Okay, I'm back here for a third time on this ordinance. I'll quickly recap. Don't know if we have a delay. One second. Quickly, I'll give you a background, an overview of local campaign finance regulations. I'll address the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you today and provide the recommended action. So on March 29th, 2022, there was a study session of the city council, and at the end of that, you directed staff to return to, return to you with an ordinance to establish campaign, local campaign limits, contribution limits. On December 13th, 2022, you considered that ordinance. You raised questions about a provision in the ordinance relating to prohibiting anonymous donations. And you requested staff to return with more information about how that ordinance differed from what was in the Political Reform Act as to regulations related to donations under less than $100 and requirements to identify who the contributor was. So on January 10th, we presented that to you. I discussed the provisions in the Political Reform Act and described how it had an implicit requirement to identify donations under $100. And at the conclusion of that meeting, you requested additional changes, including to consider adding an inflation adjustment to the amount in the campaign contribution limit in the ordinance, and to remove the civil lawsuit enforcement measures. As, by way of background, the reason this came to be was in 2019, the legislature approved a bill to limit campaign contributions. It set the default at $4,900 per person per election. And it allowed cities to enact lower limits if they desired, but otherwise, the default amount was the amount set in the statute. That amount is adjusted for inflation biannually, and biannually, every two years. And as of 2023, the state limit is $5,500. So what you have in front of you today, oh, I think I, I'm sorry, let's see. Okay, so what you have now in front of you is an ordinance that prohibits contributions from a person to a candidate in excess of $500, and we've added a CPI adjustment. It will be done in every odd year to track with the state's adjustment to the state amount. The limit does not apply to contributions of one's personal funds to their own campaign. It required, the ordinance requires a notice and any solicitations, and that notice is intended to inform potential contributors of the city's limitations. The limits do not apply to campaigns for ballot measure, referendum, or initiative election. The ordinance requires an electronic filing of campaign statements, and it establishes penalties, much like any other municipal code violation, where there is an infraction, a misdemeanor, and an administrative fine. The ordinance in front of you does not have the additional civil remedies, which allow for private right of action or bringing a lawsuit against a violator. The ordinance prohibits anonymous contributions in any amount, so although you don't need to report contributions under $100, you must at least track and have, you know, a record of who provided that to you so you know if at any point you've received donations from somebody that aggregate to more than $100, $100 or more. Here is a summary of the Political Reform Act that we discussed last time, which is that the Political Reform Act prohibits anonymous contributions of $100 or more. Again, implicitly, that means that there should be some sort of tracking to make sure, once you get to $100 of anonymous donations, those don't come from the same source. So if the city council desires to move forward with a local campaign contribution limit ordinance, the motion is to introduce, read by title only, and wait for the reading of an ordinance adding chapter 2.33 to the San Bruno Municipal Code adopting local campaign contribution limits, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the presentation? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Alvarez, you'll be next.
Okay. So thank you again for the third revision of this, and, you know, at the federal level, they take years to pass a thing, so I think we're doing okay. So one question I had was some of the portions of this, initially, it starts off saying that, you know, for a particular election, no person shall make and no candidate shall receive. In subsequent items, it just says, no person shall make a contribution, no contribution shall be made. So when we talk about penalties and fines, do these apply to the contributors, the recipients, or both?
They would apply to both. Yes.
Okay, so they're both equally liable. Okay. And beyond that, I, there was one other change I was hoping to make is, I was hoping that the notice to contributors could be, I don't know if it needs to be as wordy as it is, and do we really need to tell all of our potential donors that they need to go read the municipal code when they make a donation? Is that, I mean, the state doesn't require it. I don't know why we would want to push our potential contributors to feel like they need to be up on the law before they contribute any money.
Mayor Medina and Councilmember Salazar, I think that that relates to your question that you just asked me, which is, if it's a municipal code violation, you want to make sure that your contributors are aware of it. And so the intention is to put them on notice, the city has a limit, and that they don't violate it when they're making contributions to candidates.
Okay. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, it's not a question. I just want to make a comment. I respectfully do not support the ordinance. Since we have the state law in place, I don't think there's an urgency for this ordinance. In addition, whenever a city mandate a violation, then we do have to establish a staff to basically take care of all the complaints. The same as code enforcement officers. Whenever we mandate codes, substandard housing, we have code enforcement that monitors that. I know it's not until two years, but we do have to think about staff, who's going to be working on administering these complaints, receiving calls from residents. So that's my opinion. That's why I do not support the ordinance. Thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Vice Mayor? Oh, no, I apologize.
I have comments while we talk.
Okay, let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, please.
I have no speaker cards, and there are no virtual hands raised.
Let's bring it back to council for any comments. Vice Mayor.
So to councilmember Alvarez's point of not wanting to support this because there's, we already have it at the state level, just want to remind that the state contribution limit will be 5,500, and our limit is 500. That is, that's the whole purpose of this. It's not to make more work for people. It's not, it's not anything, it's not any of those other things. It's to make a stand against large money influence on our local elections. You know, with the current state limit, one person could have donated to me in 2020 and financed my entire campaign with $300 left over. And I don't think that that's right. I just don't. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think what brought us back here was the punitive elements, right? Now, we're talking, yes, they, a person may give a contribution with the sentiment of just believing in a person, or what they can do for their community. But yet, there's a liability now again. You know, where I think this was trying to, as it was indicated, like, well, I think that's too much. Correct me to the city attorney, but I can, a person who has the resources can self-fund their campaign, can they not?
Mayor Medina, you're correct. There is no limitation on your own contributions.
So if you have the means, you can have the best campaign ever. You could also have somebody create a PAC. You could have a PAC that puts out mailers that you're not involved with, that says either pro you or against you. So I'm trying to also grapple with, when there is a state, then it becomes the ownership of the city. So there is additional work. To say there's not, that's not, I'm not saying you said that. I'm just saying that there is some work, right? Whether it's small, whether it's small. Yeah, that's why I just corrected myself. Can I continue? Thank you. So there is some work, and we may not, not having walked through this, may not know that, but obviously, we could reach out to another community. So where I feel this was trying to go, to stop, it doesn't, it can hurt folks that, I go back to Carolyn Livinggood. Everybody always told her, why don't you run? You'd be so good. You care so much. And always, she told me, I can't afford it. I think she would have got the support. I think she would have had the contributions, but I think it's also hard to ask. So those are just some of my comments. Are there any comments, other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Medina, thank you.
I believe in the spirit of this. There should be a limit if you were going to raise money. If you have, probably all the council members here on the dais influence themselves, I think that's probably fairly accurate. You're right. So it's different when somebody else gives you the money. I've run a number of campaigns, never received more than 500. It's it's reasonable. And I'm going to vote in support of this. It's not going to stop. It's not a perfect cure for anything. There's no cure for anything. But it's an attempt in the spirit that we try to keep a level playing field, and it makes sense. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with councilmember Medina that the spirit of this is definitely in the right place. But now I'm on the fence because where I agree that there is like a sort of guiding principle, we want to send a message, you know, about where we stand on these things. We're not actually, well, I don't know, there may have been a candidate that did sort of go off the radar with contributions in a recent race, but, you know, I would say for the most part, it hasn't been a problem that that candidate didn't win. So we want to put into something that we're not really fixing anything on. And so that would be my hesitation in moving forward with it, even though I also agree with it in concept. The practical application has implications.
I can also say, because I think all of us I can also say, because I think all of us feel that there's some value to this in some ways, but then that's why I think it keeps coming back. I could make a, offer a suggestion, if it works, is that this item, come back during strategic initiatives. We talk about it. We try to iron it out in a setting that is more conducive and see if there is something we can, we can feel that would be of a value to our community with not, not having, not disadvantaging those folks that do need those funds. And I'll tell you, I speak to folks and I've been around a while. I mean, you just don't want them to, you don't want people to have to go to one spot or to feel obligated. But it's just the concern of not having it to where, if you have resources, you're in. And if you don't, you may have to think twice because it's just a challenge. Or maybe your forte is not asking for resources, depending whether it's a district election or it's an at-large election. Tell you, the cost for an at-large election is going to be more than a district election, candidly, even if you just talk about signs. So is that fair? I know the city attorney said, hey, we wanted the 500,000, which I thought that was reasonable. But then it was like, we should have one number. So we were taking the guidance of the attorney. And that's why I'm saying, we keep going back and forth. So I don't, that's why I brought up that thought. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that said, I move the motion to take the alternative, take no action, and continue to follow the state campaign contribution limits of 5,500, which also provides exceptions on recall paying of debt and carrying over contributions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Alvarez, Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
No.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Council, excuse me. Vice Mayor Hamilton?
No.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes. Okay. That alternative motion passes 3-2. Thank you, city attorney and staff. Now we'll move on to item nine. This is new on our agenda, so we'll kind of grow into it. So it's item nine, council committee report out. Any report outs that anyone would like to make tonight?
Through the chair?
Vice Mayor, thank you.
I'd like to make a report out from the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. I'll keep it brief. I serve on the Board of Directors of Bouska. And I have just two items from our recent meeting last week. The recent storms obviously caused much damage and chaos across the state and here in San Bruno, as we heard earlier tonight from Director Lee. And, but it also did a lot to help with our water supply. Hetch Hetchy is at 80.8% capacity and our water bank increased from 44% in November to over 100% in spilling as of last Thursday. So it means we're not out of the drought woods yet, but we're heading, trending in the right direction. And the next major precipitation is expected to hit us around February 1st. There's no indications that it will be biblical, as it has been. But no, I'm not making any weather promises. And then second, in 2013, Bouska issued 30-year bonds to fund major water infrastructure projects, with those bond terms expiring in 2034, in purchasing them back and then issuing them again and authorized staff to begin that process. That process concluded on January 5th of this year and is resulting in a $26.1 million savings on our repayment of those bonds. So that's money that will be able to be put back into infrastructure projects. And so that seemed significant enough to bring back as my report out.
That's great. Now, thank you for the info. Anybody else? I was just going to say, the emergency services council was postponed because of all the storms and the rain that you alluded to. So it has been postponed from last week to this week to give the county staff and those in the emergency areas that. The ALS JPA, that's the county and the ambulance, AMR, that you see, we had a meeting. And the one area that I'd bring up to council and to staff, and I'm sure they already know that, is that on the communications element of what is currently contracted, they're looking for quite an increase that is not anticipated within the JPA on the normal percentage that we do. So the board is working to try to figure. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay. Let's move on to item 10, comments from council members. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Are there any public comments for, it's a new one. So any public comments on the items that the Vice Mayor or myself talked about?
There are no speaker cards and no virtual hands raised.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 10, comments from council members. First, we'll start with Councilmember Marty Medina. Agendaize a study session to discuss the replacement of $2 million to the Measure G fund in order to expand street repair operations. Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Measure G, paying it back, fixing more streets. San Bruno's voters approved Measure G in 2019. Measure G was a general tax increase. However, there was a very clear emphasis that tax dollars would improve San Bruno's poorly maintained and failing streets. During the COVID-19 crisis, there was no other revenue source to keep our city operating at an acceptable level. Fire, police, and parks maintenance. Tonight, I'm asking the city council to hold a study session to consider redistributing $2 million to the Measure G account in order to fix the street paving in our city. I suggest the reallocated 2 million be evenly split into the four newly formed council districts. This way, all districts receive a fair share of this repayment. I have brought up this repayment option with the city manager and during the public interviews for the Measure G Citizens Oversight Committees on December 6, 2022. Noted is my understanding, the existing publicly bid paving contracts can be legally in our streets. There are more potholes. They are deeper, and they will continue to grow worse with each additional storm. I am asking my colleagues to support my request to agendize the study session. Mr. Mayor, this concludes my council comment. And I am available to answer any clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Questions or comments? I'm going to do, we'll do both. That's all right. Questions or comments from colleagues on that, on the ask? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that I absolutely support more spending on streets. But I don't really understand, because Measure G is general fund, there really wasn't, it wasn't a, I'd say, rather than agendize something for discussion around repayment or anything like that, that we wait till budget time and then make a decision at that point to allocate any available funds that are available, you know, and it would be general fund dollars, for additional spending on streets. And I would definitely support that. But I think that would be a more appropriate approach to what you're requesting. Just a suggestion.
Vice Mayor Hamilton, please.
I have a clarifying question. This might be for staff, or you guys probably know as well. I wasn't here when that reallocation took place. So what was that $2 million reallocated for specifically?
Specifically for the items that the council member Medina mentioned. It was not targeted for X amount is going to the police department, X amount is going to the fire department. But it was clear we had a fiscal.
It was just general, because we were hitting a shortfall during COVID. It was just a general.
We were making fiscal cuts all across the organization. We did a layoff incentive program to prevent, a early retirement incentive program to prevent layoffs, as well as cuts across the organization. And that $2 million plugged a hole in the general fund budget.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. As long as I have the mic on, you know, I'm in support of this. You know, the, you know, recent, the, you know, I think we all agree that, you know, the spirit of Measure G was to fund street repair expenses. And I also, but I also think that it would be appropriate to put that money back into Measure G so that, for allocation and hopefully for street repairs. So I would support having a study session on it.
For my thought, too, is to have a study session to then bring it up in a budget study. I think that is the time, whether it's one-time monies, whether it's general fund monies, where are we going? Which is kind of the same. But where are we going to put those? Are we taking that from here, putting it to Measure G? The Measure G is bringing it back to us in that form. And I appreciate your comment about you would, you supported that. I mean, we were kind of stuck at that point, really. You know, with COVID. Measure G supported it, with one caveat, but supported it, council supported it. I think bringing it back under the study session where staff can formulate. The additional thing was having it divided up into four areas, which that may be difference when you talk about $2 million. And what does that really get you if you divide it in four districts? So for me, I think the study session, which is the appropriate place to figure out, are the monies there? Let's look at, I'm going to see people standing with the hard hats, right? And saying, this is, this is what you saying yes has done to help improve our city. It's never going to be as fast as everybody wants. We all know that. That's one of the things that's consistent, I think, up on this. No matter where you live, you always hear about our streets. But I think not to have an additional study session when this can be coupled into the budget at that time, I think that that's just a more efficient, effective manner.
Mr. Mayor, and that's absolutely fine.
Oh, no.
No, no, I'm just saying, to have the study session to discuss it during budget. I didn't, it doesn't need to happen, you know, but to have that discussion.
During the study.
Yeah, yeah. Of the repayment, yes.
You know, I'm trying to say.
Yes, me too. So absolutely. So I just wanted to clarify that, that to have that discussion. And what makes this a little different is that the money had to be allocated from the oversight committee. So that extra step for them to ask, to say that it was okay with their recommendation.
I think it's a recommendation, but the city council had the authority, even if they had said, you know what? We think it's 1 million. They absolutely gave a thumbs up.
Right, right.
And then let me go to Councilmember Alvarez.
I was going to ask the same thing. I make a comment. If the intention to agendize the proposed 2 million, it wouldn't be in this budget cycle. It would be either a study session or the initiative for the proposed budget. Because I completely support it, definitely.
You're, you're correct. Not in this budget cycle. It would be in the next, which would start July 4.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Am I hearing that if, and staff is, I'm sorry, apologize. City manager, is that okay if we discuss this during the budget study time that you allot for us to come together and really look at things holistically?
Absolutely, Mayor, but we would need a motion.
Of course. I forgot. We're, we can't just agree amongst peers. We need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Please.
When is, to the city manager, when is the paving project, paving supposed to occur? Is that my impact when, anyhow? I'm sorry. I'll let you answer the question.
Yeah. When is the paving for the Measure G funds that have been allocated in this current year going to occur? I cannot tell you the month right now, but I do know that they are being designed. And what we have said is that the paving will not occur in calendar year '23. It will occur in calendar year '24. Additionally, not a part of your question, but it's worth noting because you said that we can legally increase the bid quantities by 20%, while, by 25%. While that may be the case, you have to design the projects, too, right? And so depending on where things are in the design cycle, you may not be able to just add another street. It may not be that simple. And one of the things we talked about before is that the city council, through your direction and dollars, that said, we're working on designing those projects and staff has their task orders and the design consultants have theirs. To just simply say, oh, let's add more, and to toss into it, let's allocate it by district, tosses a level of complexity that, as I sit here right now, I can't tell you that we would be able to accomplish the next cycle of road projects and let it be a comprehensive package. And you may actually get a greater discount because you would be adding $2 million more than you would ordinarily be doing. But we, I think we can have all those discussions at the budget study session where we talk about capital improvement projects.
Well, I would say, we're all in concurrence, but now with our new policy, we need a motion.
We have to make a motion to have a study session at the city manager's convenience for the budget to discuss the $2 million repayment to Measure G.
I will second.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion and simply state that at the budget study time, we will address additional allocations for pavement based on the $2 million that was spent on non-paving.
Okay. I, I'll second that.
Will do.
Thank you. So is the original motion maker okay with that change?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor said yes. We have the motion. Is it clear? Are we okay, clerks? Okay, beautiful. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes. And then, thank you for that. And then, is there any other additional comment?
Yes, please. So tomorrow, is that tomorrow? Today's Tuesday. Tomorrow's Wednesday. Wow, already. At Bel Air Elementary School, Second Harvest Distribution, 450 Third Avenue, from 1:45 to 4 o'clock, if you want to volunteer. Get there at 1:45, please. If, the line starts right around 2:00 for people that like to receive groceries. And we'll be there working. So hope to see you there. Thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, it's all right.
I wanted to acknowledge the effort that Recology is making in responding to San Bruno now, or San Bruno Responds app. I know I put a lot of those in there, so, but they're, it's amazing that they are, they are, within a day or two, picking, picking things up. So I just wanted to acknowledge their efforts and show my appreciation. So thank you, Recology.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Marty. I fully agree that that, that program is just a, so I only have one comment. The mayor spoke about this earlier, but I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the tragedy and loss of life due to gun violence this past weekend in Monterey Park and then yesterday's senseless tragedy that hit our community far too close to home in our neighboring city of Half Moon Bay. While we mourn those lost and struggle to help our neighbors heal, we once again find ourselves asking, when we, when will we, as a nation, be brave enough to confront the uniquely American problem that allows easy and nearly unfettered access to weapons of war? And simply ask, when will enough be enough? Thank you.
And the other, two colleagues said they were fine. I would just echo one thing. Boardhouse, I and then Mayor Nagalos were there. And it was amazing to me in that time and again. It was a little bit of monetary incentive. Thank you. Exactly. But some of the stuff, you would say, okay, it's probably they found it or it's been there. But there was some stuff that I was amazed. And there was. It is just an indication, like you alluded to. What I did want to say is, I want to thank Caltrans. I may not always say that, but I want to do it publicly, is that when I talked to them about the encampment on 380 and they said there is a moratorium, had nothing to do with COVID as far as encampments. As you know, as you got on the freeway, there was that encamp a couple of weeks ago to Caltrain in regards to some of just the cleanliness and overall keep. And of course, as you know, they've always had drainage issues, but they. That will be it for me. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on February 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM, right here at the senior center. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, staff. Thank you, colleagues.